Stay tuned as the music continues and thank you so much for supporting and listening to Northwest Public Radio.
This is the February 23rd, 2015 Public Works and Finance Committee meeting, City of Moscow, and hosting this meeting is Walter Steed, myself, Wayne Kraus, and John Weber, with a staff of a few dozen joining us. So, first item on the agenda, of course, is the approval of the February 9th minutes.
Well, since I was here-
You were here.
-I will make a motion that we approve those minutes. Have you read them?
The inference being that I was not-
I can't track where you are. We will consider those minutes passed. Approved. Next item is wastewater treatment plant improvements. This is the Phase 5 pilot study for temperature control. Les McDonald's presenting. And we have Cory, you might as well come up too. Cory Bounty, welcome gentlemen.
Thank you. And actually Cory will be doing the majority of this presentation. I'm just really here to give you a quick introduction. We have talked about this a little bit in the past. As you'll recall, as part of our wastewater treatment plant improvements, Phase 5 efforts, we're looking at temperature of effluent coming from the wastewater plant and compliance with the requirements of the MPDES permit that's issued by EPA. So as part of our work on the Phase 5, we did some alternatives identification a little while back, and out of that came up with about seventeen or twenty different alternatives to consider. A number of those used some treatment, some common treatment mechanisms, one being an evaporative cooling pond, which was in a number of them, and then one of the alternatives used a wetlands treatment as kind of a finishing step in the way to perhaps improve temperature of the effluent coming out of the plant. That study also recommended that we consider going a little bit further in analyzing a couple of those options, and thus the pilot projects or pilot studies were born. Cory Bounty from JUB has helped us with this and has led the project from the JUB side. And really what we've undertaken then are two pilot studies over the course of the last year to assess the viability of wetlands treatment and evaporative cooling treatment as well. And Cory's going to take you through really what the study did and what we know so far.
All right. Thanks Les. I'll give you guys each a handout, and it's the same as the slides on the board. I'll probably be pointing to the board a little bit, as some of these graphs are a little bit complicated. Like Les said, we're going to give you a little bit of background on the project, talk a little bit mostly about the results and key findings, talk about some of the decision statements that we used in the study, and then also discuss a few of the potential next steps and what information this gave us. First of all, like Les said, there was a 2011 temperature report that was done, part of the Phase 5 work out at the treatment plant. We had seventeen alternatives there on the left. We whittled those down to about five, ninety percent through the project, and they had three additional alternatives that we came up with city staff as ways to address the temperature issue out there. What we found when we did the study is there's really no silver bullet to meeting temperature, with the exception of a mechanical chiller, and no one really liked that idea a lot. The long-term costs of that are fairly expensive. So, there's all these components in building a project that might take two or three components. So like Les said, one of those components is reuse. We already have experience with that with the UFI system, but it doesn't get us all the way. So we understand the reuse component. The other components are evaporative cooling and wetlands, and how those could be combined with other parts and pieces to make a project that's compliant for temperature. So last year, we embarked on a pilot study that looked at the two alternatives, evaporative cooling and wetlands. The nice part is we had the state line wetlands out there just west of the treatment plant, very conveniently located and already built, so it was a great asset to have that there to run. Not necessarily a full-size pilot, but a full-size of a single treatment plant train. So we were able to adjust the flow and utilize this wetland, so it was nice to have that there. The overall performance of the wetland is shown on page five. The performance, we had a wetland that was started receiving water about the end of June, first week of July last year, so it was a little bit later than we had originally anticipated in the pilot study. There was some water issues that we had to deal with last spring that kind of pushed that out just a little bit. But we did get it going about the first of July and started collecting data on it. Of course, the wetland hadn't had water in it for a number of years, so it took some time for the vegetation to get established. So ultimately, we operated from July 8th to October 14th is when we shut the water off. We had one free surface wetland that was operated. It was two cells, part of, was there about ten cells out there? So we just took two of the ten cells and ran it through that. We ran about anywhere from sixty-five to two-hundred gallons per minute through there, kind of varied the flow based on some things that we learned during the process. There was some pumping issues that we had to solve. There were some inlet issues that the treatment plant guys worked on and solved for us. So ultimately, you know, the question is in the red line, the solid red line across is your eighteen-degree C discharge limit that's in your MPDS permit. And what we looked at is, okay, how effective would a wetland be to meet that eighteen-degree limit? Based on a kind of a late start for the wetlands, we divided this graph into three parts. The first part being kind of the unestablished wetland period. There was a period there for about the first month to six weeks where we had rapid growth of the grasses, the cattails, the bull rush, and the vegetation within that wetland. So even though the wetlands had water in it and water was flowing through it, we were still getting quite a bit of solar gain because the wetland vegetation hadn't established itself, hadn't maximized cooling. The next phase was really what we considered, the wetland was probably eighty, ninety percent established, so we started getting some pretty decent data based on vegetative cover within the wetlands. As you can see, the orange dots are the effluent from the wetlands. The blue dots, the light blue dots on the top are the influent from Paradise Creek. So in the beginning, that first phase, you can see that the wetlands' temperature exceeded the influent flow to the wetland, so we're picking up temperature due to solar gain, things like that that are going on in the wetlands. As we get into that second phase of establishment period, you start seeing those orange lines become consistently and even more consistently below the influent lines. So the wetlands are established, they're working as anticipated, and they're starting to drop the temperature from the inlet to outlet of the wetlands. Phase 3 starts about September 1st and goes through the end of the year, and you can see in that phase that the wetlands' effluent is always below and even has a greater degree of difference between the influent/effluent temperatures. Now that period also has, the other point on this graph probably to keep in mind is the dark blue dots on the bottom, and those are the wet bulb temperature. And wet bulb is, is the temperature, it has a lot of components in it, but it's basically is through an evaporative process, you can never get below the wet bulb temperature. And that has to do with temperature, humidity, barometric pressure, and a couple other atmospheric characteristics. So you'll never get below the wet bulb temperature. And what you can see on the right-hand side of the graph, that wet bulb temperature, it continues to go down as the season goes on, as we get into September and October, the wet bulb's less. So that's why you're seeing that orange line dive down and diverge even more from the blue line.
Kind of like a dew point.
Yeah, yeah, similar to a dew point that has a number of things. The other thing that we looked at during the process is the length of this wetland. What do we see as far as temperature drop through the length of the wetland? And you can see here again, we've only put Phase 2 and Phase 3. Phase 2 being the established wetland through kind of that August timeframe, the hotter part of the year, and then Phase 3, which is September on. And you can see that as we go through there, oops, a little too far ahead. Phase 2, you know, it's hot, it's August, we're getting cooling through that wetland, but it's only a couple degrees C through there. And that's consistent on a couple different weeks that we looked at. As you go into Phase 3, again, that dew point, the wet bulb temperature now, you're going to make me say that all day, the wet bulb temperature now is lower, so you're seeing a steeper slope on the line, it's cooling even more through the wetland. But one thing to notice, the last couple measurements there are fairly flat. So one question we ask ourselves is, if the wetland was longer, could you get more cooling? And what this graph tells us is, there still is a little bit of slope there, but not very much. You could make it longer, but you're probably not going to see much.
Quick question Cory. It would seem as you went further on into the year, though, the ambient temperatures, air temperature dropped, and so that's going to be affecting your readings to an extent.
Yeah, and that's considered in the wet bulb temperature. It's the ambient temperature's lower. Other things are happening, the nights are longer, you have less solar radiation as the days get shorter. So you're seeing that effect in the overall treatment.
One of the items, just for you to look past that last graph, one of the items that was identified by our wetlands, or wastewater treatment plant staff at the wetlands, was at the very tail end of that wetland run, which would be on the right-hand side of the graph. We were starting to see what's called a backwater condition, where the water that's going out the exit pipe and going to a pump and working its way back to the system is starting to stack up a little bit, ponding, if you will. And we also were seeing a little less vegetation thickness at that area. It was more of the lighter grasses than the heavy cattails, that type of thing. And so part of the thought is that in that area, we hadn't really established vegetation as well as we were in other parts of the wetland. And so that may also explain some of why that temperature drop was starting to flatten out a bit. We were getting a little more solar, a little less cover from vegetation from that backwater condition. So that'll come into play again as we move on.
So as far as the wetland summary, it's on page seven. What we did here is we took the data that was reserved as a maximum effluent, that's the orange dots, and looked to see, okay, if your eighteen-degree C is your compliance number, wintering the pilot period, are we able to meet that with the wetlands? And what we have is the orange dots that show it's really about the first of September before a wetland performs good enough to drop the temperature below the eighteen-degree C level. I'll briefly mention that the green dots on this graph are another way of measuring the effluent temperature. It's called a seven DAD max. It's basically an average of a seven-day period. So it takes some of those highs and lows. We're starting to see that a little bit more in some permit conditions from EPA, so we plotted that on there also. And both of those really cross the line there about first of September. We also didn't have good data in the wetlands in July and nothing before July. So we made an attempt to look at a predicted seven DAD max, and this is the black line on the graph, to give you an idea of, okay, if you use wetlands as your sole treatment, what period of time could you expect it to meet compliance? And that's the black line. So what you can see on the black line is it rises above the eighteen-degree C level around the first of July, and it remains above that with only a couple times during that period where it cooled off during July and August to get down close to the eighteen degree. And then after about September 1st, then the wetlands functioned good enough to drop it below eighteen-degree C. So it works for part of the year, just not all of the year. There's those two months in the middle of hot, dry weather where the wet bulb temperature, the cooling capacity of that wetlands just wasn't able to meet the requirement.
Is that period that you're speaking of, is that a deal breaker? Can we use that approach, or because there is this timeframe when it's really warm, the temperature is too high? Is one day too much? Is three weeks too much? How does that go?
So it kind of goes back to all those options that I showed on that second slide. Is you need to, because one thing isn't a silver bullet, you have to start stacking some things together to come up with a compliance strategy. One of the ways you could use a wetland in the future is have storage capacity for the times when the wetland wouldn't function and produce water below your discharge limit. So it could be a component of a compliance strategy.
Or you could pump it somewhere else.
Before we move on, comment Les, in conversations that I've had with staff in months past over our temperature problems with discharge in Paradise Creek, I was already under the impression that July and August were really the only two months that we were having an issue with to begin with, that temperature of Paradise Creek, as it crosses the state line, is compliant with EPA standards, doing what we're doing right now, other than two or three of the hot summer months. Was I under the wrong impression?
No, you're under the right impression, and it varies-
And this didn't solve anything, because we're already under the temperature, and now we got two months, we do this, and we're still above it in two months.
It does vary from year to year, and sometimes we see, you know, even mid-June having difficulties or even into mid-September, later part of September, depending on the season and what's going on in the creek and what's going on at the plant. So yeah, I mean, the idea here was to assess how effective this one treatment technique could be, and could you lower temperatures, you know, a couple of degrees if you were to apply that to our system? Obviously, being the type of system that is reliant upon the same atmosphere that we struggle with at the plant itself, then yeah, it's subject to the same atmospheric problems that we would otherwise have. So as Cory's saying, it may not work in and of itself by itself, but in conjunction perhaps with a storage facility that could store for that period when it's the warmest, and then as temperatures drop, then release, because you're getting very effective cooling, you know, on those shoulder seasons, we call it, beginning late, early and late, then maybe that combination of things would get us there. That's part of what we still have to assess.
And then having the type of winter we're having now with, there's going to be less runoff, and later on in the year, there's going to be less wet stuff in Paradise Creek, so that when we add to it, the chances of-
We have a greater effect.
It's going to, and probably lasts a little longer.
You actually have a fairly interesting MPDS permit also, on the way that they deal with temperature. They allow for mixing with Paradise Creek. It's a series of tables that, between the flow and Paradise Creek temperature and the temperature of effluent, there's this compliance strategy that's fairly unique in NPDS permits, and I haven't been talking to the permits people, maybe Les can. That could change on how they address a permit requirement, and that could, well, you're compliant now, it could put you out of compliance, even though you didn't change anything, having to do with things like the seven DAD max as a permit condition instead of a single-point sample that's currently required in the permit. There's some things that could change there that could make your non-compliance window bigger.
Okay. If we can hold our questions, and I've just-
I'll have wetland questions, and rather than have him go into the cooling tower, I can do them now, or wait he does the cooling tower and then come back to the wetlands, wherever you wish.
I think I'd like to let Cory go ahead and finish up with his report, and then we'll just go ahead and dive into all the questions.
So the other component of the pilot studies was looking at a cooling tower equipment. This was to, is really a surrogate of what was in the original temperature report in evaporative cooling, or evaporative storage-type component. So we ran the cooling tower from July 15th to August 22nd. The unit was larger than we needed for the flow that we could put through it, so it did allow us to operate in a couple different scenarios. So we were able to do that. We saw a consistent cooling of about two degrees Celsius through the cooling tower, and a cooling tower is fairly simple. We pumped water from the wastewater treatment plant after disinfection through the cooling tower, which was basically, you know, the big metal box there with two large fans on top that suck air through a media that's in the square component of that, that's basically showered with water. So the water's cascading over in the media, and the air is being sucked through it, so you get that evaporative cooling. Again, the red line is the eighteen-degree C, the blue line is the influent to the cooling tower, and the orange line is the effluent for the cooling tower. So you can see it's, the change in temperature of influent is reflected in the change in temperature and effluent, and like we said, we saw about a two-degree drop in temperature. Again, this isn't a silver bullet, it didn't work. As you can see, most of the orange lines are above, the daily maxes are above that eighteen-degree C, so not likely to be the single solution to temperature compliance. The other thing with the cooling tower is you're running some pretty good-sized fans, so whether you're running one or two fans, you were looking at twenty-four to forty-eight dollars per million gallons for electricity. So a little bit more expensive to run this than it is the wetlands, because they're much more passive. If you looked at compliance with your eighteen-degree C limit, on a little bit easier to read graph, there was actually one day that the daily max was below eighteen-degree C in that month or five-week period, and if you had a compliance of a seven DAD max, which is the averaging of those days, then you wouldn't have been compliant at all with the cooling tower. One of the things we looked at in our report is, okay, cooling tower, the wetlands are very dependent on atmospheric conditions, so how did 2014 look compared to past years as far as highs and lows, things of that nature? So this is a historical comparison, the red lines are the maximum daily highs, the blue lines are minimum, maximum average wet bulbs and minimum average wet bulbs. So as you can see, the black line in general is bounded by the highs and the lows. So I guess what this graph says is it was a fairly typical year. There were some areas that were, you know, a week or two right near the highs, and there was a week or two right near the lows, so somewhat of a typical year when you look at it throughout history. We had some decision statements that were part of the quality assurance plan that we put together, the pilot plan. One was trying to decide, can we operate, can operations provide sufficient cooling to achieve the maximum effluent temperature of eighteen degrees through the study periods? And overall, the answer is no. There was, neither one of the technologies was able to meet that over the full compliance period of the summer. What about the seven DAD max? Does peak highs or seven DAD max make any difference? And the answer was no, neither one of those potential limits in your permit, neither one of them would make a difference as far as compliance. What is the approach through the study period? The approach is defined by wetland effluent temperature minus the wet bulb. We're trying to compare what we observed during the study to basically book numbers. And typically, the approach, book numbers, say, like three to six, three to seven is that number, and we were right about in the middle, four-point-three and four-point-eight for the two technologies. So these were working, you know, kind of as expected and within the typical range. The temperatures weren't, we weren't able to reach eighteen-degree C, so preliminary design for full-scale systems weren't evaluated. And the other question we had, not so much on the cooling tower, but on the wetlands, is you introduce this in a natural system, are you going to affect the water quality such that if you were able to work out a discharge permit with EPA, are you going to start violating on other water quality things such as BOD or TSS? Ammonia, phosphorus, you know, you spend a lot of money treating phosphorus, less than you want to do is put it in the wetlands and kick it out non-compliant. And the data that we collected during the season was very favorable on that, that it does not increase, and we wouldn't have seen a permit violation associated with the discharge from the wetland.
Cory, could you explain BOD and TSS, how they would be introduced in the wetlands?
Yeah, so BOD and TSS, so TSS is an easy one. If you grow algae, if you grow particulate matter within the wetlands, and that's not contained within the wetlands, and it gets in your discharge, you can create TSS, which is total suspended solids. Other things like fecal coliform that's in there, you know, as birds and rodents and mice and everything, use that, their bodily functions is discreet, fecal coliforms, things of that nature, and you can start picking that up through natural systems. Things like BOD, again, if plant material, things of that nature can be introduced in the system that start raising the BOD, but we didn't see anything that would be of concern on any of those, which was, which I think we all had some reservations going in whether that would be the case or not.
Thank you.
So in summary, both technologies, we saw in the order of about two-degree C drop through the, and I'll qualify that, that was through the hot period, the July and August timeframe, you see about a two-degree drop. If you get into the shoulder months, the wetlands, you can see more. You'll need basically supplemental cooling methods. These aren't the silver bullets, you'll need something else to meet your permit requirements. And the data that we gathered in 2014, I think, was very valuable into the potential of combining these systems into some type of compliance strategy. So kind of the next steps that we took away from the pilot study, as far as the cooling tower goes, there's no additional study there. I mean, we got as much data as we could get out of the cooling tower, running it for the five-week period there. From the wetland standpoint, we got good data, say, August, September, October. We're able to take that and do some projections back prior to that. But if you're going to go to a full-scale system, there could be some value in some additional study on the wetlands portion. The big part would be to get the water flowing into the wetlands early and get them established, so you'd have full vegetation from day one. As Les mentioned, in going back to the previous temperature report, there were some years in May and June where you had some temperature violations based on just that particular year. So getting that established early and identifying that we could knock those out of consideration with the wetland would be important. Vegetation type and location, Les mentioned earlier, that some parts of the wetland were very well populated with the cattails, the tall bull rush, that type of stuff. There were some areas within the wetlands that had only short grasses, you know, two feet tall grass, you know, so the shading potential, that's fairly low. So is there a way that you could help the wetland grow and fill in some of those shading areas, and would that increase the temperature drop? Variation of flow rates, we could play with flow rates a little bit to see, kind of push the potential, see how much we can push through and get an acceptable drop, and also see if you slow it down, if you let it stay in there longer and go through a couple cooling cycles at night, would that be beneficial? Effluent header modifications, we were pulling water, the way the wetlands are designed right now, we're pulling water just off the top of the wetlands, which is probably not the coolest water you're getting off it. If you could get down to the bottom and pull off the bottom of the wetlands, and our water is only eight to twelve inches deep, you could see some additional cooling there, and that's one thing that could help us. The other thing is, we use Paradise Creek water- The other thing is, we use Paradise Creek water for this evaluation that had to do with NPDS permits and some other items. We believe there'd be some benefit to using the affluent from the treatment plant, recycled water such that the U of I uses on their golf course and whatnot. And the reason why is in dumping into Paradise Creek and mixing, the temperature overall throughout the year is about a degree cooler than it would have been out of the treatment plant. So, we've had internal discussions, does that mean that everything's going to be a degree warmer, or if it's a degree warmer, there's more driving potential to get down towards wet bulb, so it may not make any difference. So, it could be advantageous to run the study again with that affluent and see what that driving potential is, and then see, again, go back to those water quality items, if we're using just wastewater treatment plant recycled water affluent, what does that do to the water quality at the end of the wetlands?
Okay, Walter.
Thank you. The 18 degrees C ungrade temperature, where are we trying to meet that? In Paradise Creek or at the affluent pipe?
The manner in which our permit is written, our point of compliance is where we discharge out of our pipe into the creek. That being said, the standard is based upon the state of Washington standard set for Class A waterways within the state of Washington, and that is measured, in essence, at the state line within Paradise Creek. But that is the standard that was then set for Paradise Creek in Idaho during the TMDL process back in the 90s, and subsequently then the standard put in our NPDS permit. So, the short answer is at the pipe, but there are considerations and complications with that standard as it relates to potential changes in Washington standards that are in the works here in the next couple of years, and how Idaho responds to that, and ultimately how EPA responds to that.
But at the moment?
At the pipe.
We're measuring in the pipe right before it goes into the creek?
With the mixing allowance.
With the mixing allowance, well, and the mixing allowance is in essence built into the permit standard.
Right. Is the plant affluent very consistent 365 days a year?
It does vary throughout the year.
A lot?
And I'd probably have to have Todd come answer that question as much as anybody here that he's here in the audience, but it does fluctuate throughout the year, just as you would see seasonal temperatures change, amount of flow, how much solar radiation we get in the summer months versus the winter months, that type of thing. So, I don't know if Todd wants to add to that if he could come up.
Here, you can take my chair. I'm going to stay out of this conversation.
Thank you.
Hi, Todd.
The plant affluent, is it more or less consistent in temperature year round, or does it vary much?
It fluctuates, definitely. Like, right now, we're around 13, 14 degrees Celsius, and of course, in the summer months, we're up to 22, maybe 23 degrees Celsius.
So, it varies depending upon season?
Yes, sir.
Is it a product, it's a product of both air temperature and INI? Is that correct?
Yeah, I mean, you'd have to only assume that.
Okay.
Those are some of the factors, yes.
Okay. If I may?
Go ahead, Walter.
On your page 5 graph, Corey, you've got three phases, the first being the unestablished wetland.
Correct.
Are you saying that if you were putting water through the wetland year round, it would be established year round?
Not necessarily year round, but earlier in the season. We weren't able to put, so this well-in has been there for a number of years.
It had not been used in?
Had not had any water in it for four or five years.
Understood.
If you could start putting water in it, maybe April or May, that early growing season, you would have vegetation being established probably by mid-May or first part of June instead of first of August.
Still, on the same chart, you got below 18C, August 25 or the end of, the very end of August.
Yes.
How much of that do you attribute to outdoor temperature and how much to having established wetland?
So, after the first September, I'd say it's outdoor temperature, and that's reflected in the graph by the dark blue line on the bottom, and that's the wet bulb temperature. So, as the wet bulb temperature drops, you get more cooling of the affluent.
So, a more established wetland still wouldn't get you there?
For the July, like the July period?
Okay.
No, likely not. And that's the, that's what we tried to show in page 7 graph is the black line. If we predicted, we use the data we gathered in late July and August and brought it back, or brought it back in time.
Back in time.
The earlier months, June, July, would we be able to meet it with more established vegetation? And what this graph says is no.
So, what you just now said is a reiteration of the statement in 5.3 in the full report, which reads, "As neither of the cooling technologies sufficiently cooled water to meet the goal of 18C, recommendations for a full scale system will not be made."
So, that comment was?
Your verbal statement and that are pretty much consistent, just said different ways.
Okay, yeah.
So, why would we want to continue to study the wetland if it can't get there?
So, from my thoughts, there's a couple of things that it could do. We have a couple of different flow regimes that we talk about running in a future wetlands, play with the volume of flow through there. More established wetlands would help us understand, this is a prediction, we use statistics to come up with this, it'd be to prove the statistics. The benefit of that would be, a compliance strategy is likely going to be a series of unit operations to get you to compliance. So, typically, I think you made, I think when you made this statement, we only run into temperature compliance within kind of a few months in the middle. If you go back to the temperature reports, there's a few other times in May and June, depending on the year, depending on the climate. So, what another wetlands, with a refinement of the wetland study would do is, if you're going to combine these and say, okay, you know, we're going to use evaporative cooling in wetlands to treat our temperature issue, what that would drive is, either method's going to have a noncompliant period, and that noncompliant period, the solution to that is either a mechanical chiller or storage. So, one possible scenario would be that you design a system that has evaporative cooling, storage lagoon, and a wetlands, and then you size the evaporative wet, evaporative storage component based on how much time you don't expect the wetlands to perform good enough to meet your requirements. So, basically, if you predict that you have 60 days that you can't, that the wetland, evaporative cooling in wetlands won't meet your permit requirement, then you need 60 days of storage. If you can optimize the wetland and shrink that compliance timeframe, then maybe you only have to have 45 days of storage.
Is this going to look like the storage lagoon in McCall?
It could. I mean, that is an option. The other, I mean, there's other options within the, within the original temperature report, and not one item was selected in there. It was, here's a host of items. So, another wetland study could help refine what that window of noncompliance is.
The McCall pond, I think JUB worked or works on it, one or the other?
We worked, yeah, vaguely familiar with it.
It's huge.
Yes.
I mean, you could sit a football field down in it two different directions and it would sit flat on the bottom. And probably if you turned a football field on end, it'd eat about half of a football field that's that deep. But we talking about something like that possibly?
Well, if you had 60 days of noncompliance, I think some of the numbers we had in the original temperature report were 60 million gallon lagoon, and I could grab the study and tell you how big we, we'd roughly size that.
Twelve parts, 10 acreage.
Trying to recall.
Do we have that area out there?
Let me look. Well, we've, depending on the size, that study?
And I'm not trying to get ahead of ourselves here, don't misunderstand.
Sure.
I'm just, I'm just trying to, I believe that what we're being asked to look at is to recommend additional wetland studies.
It's part of the discussion.
I'm just trying to figure out if we do that, does it change anything in the long run? I mean, I presume the additional wetland study's going to cost us a few tens of thousands of dollars. Is it money well spent, or we're going to end up with this big pond anyway?
Well, I think you're going to end up with a large pond if we go to some sort of either wetlands treatment or land application. What really drives it then is what's the size? And a 15 day or 30 day differential in the season makes quite a bit of difference in the size and therefore the cost that goes along with it.
Okay.
So, that's what we're trying to kind of get a better handle on is, okay, what, we know that there are issues starting as early as the late part of May, parts of June, clearing into September, you know, so you're talking three, four, maybe even four and a half months in some years. If we can shrink that down to 60 day or 40 day, 45 day period with a wetlands treatment component, then it really changes the picture of what that pond looks like and how big that has to be, how much land and how much cost is associated.
And the wetland would be on the backside of the pond?
Yes.
Four to six acres would be a 20 to 40 million gallon pond.
How deep?
I think we had 12, 15.
15.
Something like that, maybe up to 20.
It's not that big.
John, did you have any questions?
Well, what is the temperature of the Paradise Creek before it gets to the treatment plant? Reason I ask that, is there any way that we could add that to the affluent? Essentially, is, you know, if you don't want all of the stuff coming out of the smoke stack, just build the smoke stack higher. Same amount comes out, but it's coming out.
In a different place, yeah.
Well, and by the time it gets down to you, it's diffused some.
We have, the permit takes into account the temperature of the creek.
Okay.
And so, what we can discharge in volume and temperature fluctuates based on the flow and temperature of the creek.
Okay.
That's that odd permit component that Corey was talking about, it's somewhat unusual. Most agency permits are just a set temperature and that's just where you are. In the summer months, Paradise Creek slows to a trickle, as I'm sure you're well aware.
Yeah.
And there are places where it's almost standing water, pretty shallow, you see some algae.
So, it wouldn't work anyway.
Temperatures might be 20, 22, 24 degrees, and so, that really doesn't help us. In that case, a lot of times, we would be cooling the creek from what the natural condition is, which is one of the interesting components of what we're dealing with, so. I should mention that I referenced a little bit earlier that there may be potentially some changes in the temperature standard that DOE is working on.
Say that again. Changes in the standard?
Maybe some changes in the temperature standard.
18 may change.
Yeah, 18 may change, and Department of Ecology in Washington's been studying this for about six years now, I believe, and got slowed down through the hard economic times, but they're back on it now. And out of that may come a different standard with potentially a higher temperature in Washington.
Allowed.
Allowed.
Higher allowed.
Higher allowed, which in theory, then Idaho would likely follow suit in its TMDL updates.
Is our current 18 from Idaho identical to ecology's?
I believe it is identical to ecology's now.
Okay.
Idaho's in the process of updating the TMDL right now. I'm on the watershed advisory group, and we're starting to talk about temperature here in the next 30, 60 days. And I've asked that ecology be part of that discussion so they can inform the group about what ecology's status is. So, that'll help us take a look at what may change in the not, hopefully not too distant future.
Let me ask you this question, if we were 10 miles further from the Washington state line, would we still be having to have this same discussion?
It's somewhat dependent upon the nature of the water body you're discharging to. If it's large enough that your effect is dissipated on its way off to the state line, then probably not, it'd probably be a different discussion.
So, the bottom line is, we're still looking at what's the temperature of Paradise Creek as it enters the state of Washington?
That's true.
What are our studies showing that without any treatment, just doing it like we are right now, what is the temperature and how many degrees less does it have to be to be compliant?
Well, it does vary throughout the season. We really haven't established a target number, per se, and so, it's going to be?
Somebody asked because they're telling us we're not in compliance.
Yes, at times, that is true, and, you know, it can fluctuate up to 3 degrees.
How many?
Three.
Man, that's just.
Yeah, yeah.
This is, if I'm reading, this is more, it looks like about 6, looks like we're hitting 24.
Yeah, there are probably certain times when that is the case.
On this particular set of data.
I'm just taking, in the averages.
Does the EPA have somebody checking on this every day? I mean?
Us, us, because that's part of our reporting requirements. We report, we monitor all of our affluent temperatures, and we do have to, you know, keep track of that and work with them.
Turn them down.
Yeah, it doesn't work that way.
Go ahead, Gary.
Yeah, as Les has alluded to, we've discussed this, we had the original NPDS permit years and years ago. We discussed the temperature, we discussed whether the temperatures in South Fork of the Palouse River were relevant to Paradise Creek. We discussed that Paradise Creek is an intermittent stream below 95, all of those issues, and what we've been told, and we appealed the NPDS permit at the time, and what it came down was, is that we are held to the standard of the downstream state. So, yeah, if you're 50 miles away, something like that, there'll be a tenuosity, I guess you want to call it, but we're held to that standard. If Washington is trying to get their temperature more in line, I guess, with what I believe most people think that it is, as Les indicated, the standards that they apply to Paradise Creek on the Washington side are those of a Class A recreational stream, which we've admitted, and I think Washington's admitted for years, that that was a default classification because they did not have the personnel nor the funding sufficient to rate all of their streams, to do TMDLs on all of their streams. So, they threw all of the ones that weren't high priority, in which Paradise Creek was one, into that Class A recreational use. So, they've continued to try and develop this TMDL. If we can get that lowered, I shouldn't say if the, if the state decides that the appropriate temperature is less than the 19 degrees C that they're requiring now, what it might not get us to where we don't have to do anything with our affluent, but if we can reduce that by a couple of degrees, it means we'd have to treat it that much less time. And one of these treatments that these gentlemen have talked about might be sufficient if we could get that temperature adjusted.
Right, it's kind of meeting in the middle. I mean, if the standard temperature is raised, then we don't have to go as far, and so, these types of treatments are going to be more viable. Or perhaps you even look at something else, you know, Corey mentioned a chiller at the beginning of the presentation, you know, in the overall scheme of things, not necessarily the best option, because even though it has a low capital cost, has a high energy usage, fairly high maintenance, and so, over a 20-year period, that cost starts to compare to, you know, many other treatment mechanisms. However, if you turn it on, it works, and when you turn it off, when you don't need it, all right, so it's very predictable and very reliable. If the temperature standard changes and the amount of time that we have to operate that type of a device shrinks, then it becomes probably a more viable option to consider because then the energy cost is shrunk as well. And with the low capital cost, it pencils out much better, and you use it when you need it. So, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot of things in play and a lot of flux that's going on in this arena right now, and we're still wading through all of that.
What kind of a timeframe do we have on this?
We need to keep moving forward, you know, we need to continue to make progress on resolving permit related issues, so.
Gary, you know of any conversations going on with Washington DEQ right now on reclassification of Paradise Creek? of Paradise Creek?
Well, as Les indicated, they're in the middle of their TMDL process.
Right.
So it could come at any time. We thought it would be done by now.
Yeah, they got, they were held up through the economic times, and there was a period of time when the governor of Washington said there would be no new rulemaking, which is a rulemaking process that's needed to set a new TMDL. And so that hold was put on for a couple of years. My understanding is that they've now completed their modeling of the system, they've got their field data, and they're starting to assess what it really should be. And there have been studies that have been done by them that showed that the classification was incorrect for the type of water body that was here, and that it should be changed. And so we don't know yet what it will change to. We hope to start hearing some of that this year, actually.
And we've been appreciative of EPA's tolerance, if you will, of our ability to try some different things. I mean, the wetlands was a situation where we had discharge issues, our permit wasn't such that we could discharge directly into the wetlands without the permission of the EPA for fear of violating our own permit. So we got through that, they're allowing us to try some things there. We're still operating under a permit that was issued 1996.
Ninety-nine.
Ninety-nine, so, and they're a five-year permit, so it shows you how much stuff is going on with EPA.
So what are we looking at, estimated cost to extend the wetlands pilot project?
Well, we don't know if we've run any numbers yet. We would bring it back to, to the committee for consideration.
We'll run numbers when we come back.
And see if we want to proceed with that. But the main intent today was to really give you an update on, on the findings of the study, mention the fact that we are looking at the prospect of a second summer, if that's, you know, something the council's willing to accept. We are looking at the possibility of using effluent from the plant through a land application process. We're working with DEQ right now on how that might be possible. We don't yet have an answer. They think it could be, but it has to run through headquarters, all of that, so we'll see. If, if that doesn't work, it would be using creek water again, as we did last summer.
I would say that in light of the fact that continuing our experimentation studies is keeping us in compliance with the older permit, at least they're not on, as opposed to us withdrawing and not doing anything, or on the other side, the worst-case scenario that I could see right now would be spending $6 to $12 million to get ourselves down to where we're compliant, Paradise Creek gets reclassified, and suddenly we just spent millions of dollars that we didn't have to spend. So to me, the prudent direction is to continue with the studies we have now, and perhaps with reclassification, two to three degrees we're getting now, and maybe a little bit more if we have a larger wetlands, that, maybe that will, maybe we'll get lucky and everything will just kind of come together without having to spend multiple millions of dollars. That's my thoughts on it.
And our message has always been that we want to comply with the permit, we want to do the right thing, that's the message that's been given consistently to EPA. EPA does have an anti-backsliding rule, which means if you comply with the permit, that the requirements that are there, even if they're relaxed, you're still held to those requirements. So you're absolutely right, Wayne, if, if there are changes in the wind, it makes sense for the good of the community to meet whatever those requirements are, but not to overdo it to the point where you're overtreating it for something that isn't going to give you much of an econo, or an environmental benefit.
Okay, anything else, Walter?
Nope.
John? Okay, well, I think this committee's going to go ahead and recommend extending the wetlands pilot project then.
Wants to come back to us.
Yeah, but, yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, where are we at here? Next item is, we have Tyler Palmer with the 2015 weed spray program.
This one should be hopefully less complicated than the last one, gentlemen. This is our annual weed spray program that we bring before you guys each year. We've worked out, we, we take this proposal to the Sustainable Environment Commission and have them review it each year. What we've worked out with the Sustainable Environment Commission is if there's a proposed change on our chemical list, then we will go and meet with the Sustainable Environment Commission to review the changes and to field any questions they might have. If the list is remaining the same, then we shoot them notification that we're, we're moving it forward along with the current list and allow them to make any comment, but they do that to us without actually attending their meeting. This year, we had two changes, two proposed changes to the list. The one was to add a chemical back to the list that had been on the list for several years. Due to some distribution issues, we, it wasn't available in the area, and that's why it wasn't used last year, and it's back on the list this year. That was the vengeance product. Esplanade is the new chemical this year. It was added. It, it shows a lot of promise, it actually is, I believe you guys have in the packet the MSDS sheet for the esplanade. It's, it's actually proving to be pretty environmentally safe, especially comparatively to other products, and, and seems to be very effective, and so that, that seems to be an upgrade in what we've had available in our toolbox. I'll mention that, that the chemicals listed on our chemical list, that doesn't mean that they're all used on every street. In fact, some of them aren't used at all in a given year. It just provides the contractor with the tools and the toolbox necessary for what weeds we do see that spring up. There was a modest increase in the contract amount this year, it went from $12,561 to $12,691, that's an increase of $130.
Can we find that somewhere, Gary?
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Can we find $130 somewhere?
I'm certain we can.
We're going to try.
Take it out of Tyler's pay, we can make it happen.
It's a good price, we, we added a couple parking lots that hadn't been taken care of before that we've asked them to keep an eye on, and, and that was a lot of the increase was, was just in taking care of those parking lots. Shoal Brothers has been our contractor of record, we've had a lot of success with them for several years. One of the good things with this type of program in having a contractor that's familiar with the system is that there's a lot of inherent knowledge, and so they know what weeds pop up, when they pop up, and where. This will go through the typical advertising process for the no-spray list, so that residents who would like to perform the maintenance adjacent to their property can do so. They call in to our office or send an email, we place them on a list, and then the spraying doesn't take place in front of their property, and in so doing, they agree to maintain the weeds in front of their property. And that's been a program that's been successful, we've been able to reach the people that, that would like to be on that list. With that, I'll stand for any questions you might have.
I noticed that you've, Jackson Street parking lot, would that be in those water runoff ditches that are there?
Not, not as much there, it's more the cracks along the curb, so the crack between the curb and the asphalt where we'll get weeds that come up there, that's, that's primarily where, where that would be. If, if we had a noxious weed that, that did germinate there, then, then, yeah, they, they would take care of it there, but the, the primary target there is the, the crack between the asphalt and the curb.
Okay. Walter?
Go with it.
All right. I think that we'll go ahead and recommend approval, might as well stay right here.
You're not going to ask me?
You were just, I thought you were done. John, did you have anything else you'd like to add?
Well, no, just that I think we should approve it.
Okay, we'll approve it and put it on the consent agenda.
Thanks, gentlemen.
Thank you.
We have some reports, and since Tyler, since you're already here, I'll just ask you to go ahead and give the 2015 pavement management program report.
The, the report in the packet is not the correct one.
Yeah, it was an incorrect attachment, apologize for that.
You can't apologize, that's my bad.
Okay, it's Tyler's fault, so now the 130 is coming out of your pack.
I wonder, it's updated 2013, so, yeah.
It looked very familiar when I looked at it, I thought I'd seen it before.
Yeah, some of you guys.
I'm trying to remember, when did we do Main Street and wouldn't, you know?
It's got a couple years now.
Still looking good, though?
It is, it looks really good. All right. Coming today to give the council an overview, the committee an overview of the pavement management program that we're proposing for 2015. One of the main reasons that, that I'm, I'm bringing this today is I want to revisit something that we've discussed over the years, and I think that with some of the choices that we're having to make this year, it really illustrates that the time is upon us now where we're having to make really tough decisions as far as pavement management goes. I know many of you have seen this already, this is, this is budget allocation, where do we want to put our money with our streets? And when we have the nationwide problem of inadequate funding for streets, and, and something that's, that's very much a problem here in the state of Idaho, our, our funding mechanisms are just so limited. On average, we're funding about, you know, 16 to 20% of what we need to keep our maintenance program up and going where it ought to be. And so in 2010, we, we built our pavement management program, did a, did a rebuild on it, and really tried to emphasize our treatments, because we just get more bang from our buck doing the surface treatments. And recall, we discussed, you know, it's similar to changing the oil rather than waiting till the engine blows up and then trying to change out the engine. The flip side of this is that we will have roads that are in really poor shape that we just can't afford to rebuild, because it doesn't make sense from a, from a money standpoint, because it costs so much more to do that, and that's something that we're really up against this year. The degradation of our roadway system, which is inevitable unless there's some sort of funding change to get us to a level where we can maintain it where it ought to be, hits us in a lot of places. It requires far more maintenance, you know, and one of the reasons that we've been able to keep up as well as we have is that we've been able to train staff, and, and we have a really good streets crew that get out there and they really try and stay on top of it. But I'd like to just run through really quick the options that we're faced with, and just, I'd like to do this to illustrate the choices that we're having to make. What we're proposing for this year is called an asphalt rubber chip, an AR chip. It's a, it's a new treatment that we're excited about, new to the inland northwest, it's, it's been, they've used it in several areas before, but it's basically like a chip seal, but they use ground-up tires in the emulsion, which gives it a lot of flexibility. And it also allows you to apply it on roads that otherwise we hadn't been able to. So it's, it's a very interesting tool for our toolbox, because we had a, a large chunk of roads that we kind of had to classify as pending rebuilds, because there wasn't really a treatment that we could do to them. And if this functions the way that it has functioned in, in several other cities and departments of transportation, it will give us a treatment option that's more expensive than a slurry seal or some of these other treatments that we can do, but far less expensive than even an overlay or a rebuild, that we can target some of those 15- to 20-year-old streets that we used to just have to say, well, there's not a lot we can do with them.
I may. Tyler, does that mean some of those are 20% of failed streets, you might be able to save some of those with this emulsion?
There, there are some that we would have otherwise classified as either beyond useful life or pending rebuild that we can potentially use this treatment on, and so we're, we're really excited to try it. Through our, through our street, our street maintenance co-op that we established two years ago, we, we've cooperated with other entities, and so the city of Lewiston had planned on doing this with us, and they had a large water leak that kind of ate away a lot of money that they had to use otherwise. But the city of West Richland is, is going to be doing this project, and then Shalan County actually put out a large project. And so it offsets a lot of the mobilization costs, or some of these specialized treatments, the mobilization costs for a community the size of Moscow are just, they're, they're too big an obstacle to overcome. And so by cooperating with other, other entities, we've been able to get some of these treatments to Moscow and, and offset a lot of that mobilization cost. But what I'd like to hit on really quick is, I'm sure you're all familiar with this little stretch of Third Street, East City Park is right there. It's in bad shape, it's, it's, it doesn't look good. There's, there's right in front of the park, and it's a very visible stretch of street. It needs to be rebuilt, it's, it's something that is beyond treatment. We have base failures, and that's really where we can't put a surface treatment on. Once the base has gone, the surface treatment has gone, is, is not an option. So when you look at areas like this, that's because the base has failed underneath, there's, there's water underneath there. And so just by way of comparison, the cost that we are looking at to what it would take to rebuild the blocks in front of East City Park, we're looking at about $75 a square yard is, is what it's going to cost, what, what it would cost to do a rebuild, you know, and this, this means we have to dig it out, put in new road base, and rebuild the street. By way of comparison, the treatment that we're doing, this AR chip seal, costs us somewhere between $5.5 and $7 a square yard, depending on where the bids come in. Now, that's offset because obviously a complete rebuild, you're going to get more life out of that pavement, you know, but optimistically, if we, if we assume a 30-year life of the new pavement, if we break it down to cost per year per square yard, the rebuild costs us $2.50 per year per square yard, so per year of life of pavement per square yard, it costs us $2.50. The treatment, this AR chip that we conservatively hope to get a 10-year life out of, we're looking at more like $0.60 per year per square yard. And so from, just from the math standpoint, it makes all the sense in the world. We, we have to do these surface treatments, and we can't sacrifice these surface treatments chasing our tail doing these far more expensive rebuilds. The flip side is, we don't have money to do these rebuilds, and, and these are very visible areas of town that the community's going to say, hey, this road looks terrible, why aren't we rebuilding this?
Tyler, if that base is gone, aren't you putting lipstick on the pig?
This is not one of the proposed areas for a surface treatment. What I'm saying is this is, so our, our alternative is, with the money that we have this year in the pavement management program, I should have clarified this, Walter, we can either do that little stretch, those blocks.
Rebuild it.
Rebuild it, or we can do everything that's shown in red with the surface treatment.
Not both?
Not both, yeah, and, and they're not overlapping. The, the Third Street, we're not able to do. So this is an example of a road that we can do with a rubberized chip, which otherwise we would have just had to throw our hands up. The difference is, this road has, the, the alligator cracking here is fatigue-wearing, it's fatigue-cracking. If you'll notice, the crown is pretty consistent, we don't have a lot of rutting, we don't have areas where we have clay coming up through.
Believe the base to be good.
The base is still, the base is still good in this area, and so this is, this is a great candidate to try, I mean, it's an aggressive candidate, but this is the kind of stuff that communities are doing this on, that before, as Gary mentioned, you just had to kind of throw your hands up and say, I'm going to have to wait to rebuild this thing. So.
So, so, so this new process is soup with hamburger in it?
Yes.
It, it's thicker, it's got rubber chips in it.
That's right, it, it goes down like a traditional chip seal. It's thicker, but it is thicker.
Chip seal is, is, is emulsion with chips laid over it?
That's.
Is this emulsion with rubber laid over it?
This is, the, the rubber is in the emulsion, and then the chips are laid over it, just like a traditional chip seal.
Still chip?
Mm-hmm. You still chip. The, the emulsion goes down at 300 degrees, it sets really quickly, and, you know, chip seals aren't the most popular treatment in cities, they're, they're really not, because people don't like them because of the rock. This doesn't shed as much rock, but it will, but with, it's one of those things that with the funding realities, we just, we have to do the affordable treatments, the things that we get the bang for our buck out of, and that's, that's really where we're at with this. You know, another consideration that we have that can make it more friendly is a cape seal. We can come back over the top of it with a slurry seal, and that's called a cape seal. So you put down the chip and you put the cape over the top. The problem that we run into with that is, that then triggers the requirement within the ADA to replace the ramps. So if we put down a chip seal, I can fog coat it and not have to replace the ramps, but if we cape seal it, if I put a slurry over the top, then we have to replace all the ramps. So just in our proposed areas for this treatment, if we do the cape seal and try and make it a little bit more friendly to the residents, we're looking at somewhere between $90 and $110,000 in ramps that we would have to replace, which would just chop the project down to a size that.
But you're not talking chip seal.
That wouldn't be realistic.
You're talking this rubber stuff.
It's, it's a rubberized chip, it's considered a chip seal, yes. So the, the reason that I'm here giving this report today is I just, I want to emphasize, you know, we've, we've talked, it seems like a lot in the future tense about these tough decisions that are coming with our roadway system, and I would really like to impress upon everybody that they're here, that, that this is, this is a, this is a primary arterial here in town, that we have to make these tough choices. We have to say, even though we know this is very visible, and we're going to hear about this, this is where the little bit of money that we do have has to go, and we have to start thinking about funding. Some of you may have seen some of the articles lately, the, the state is considering an increase in the gas tax and registration fees as, as two components to trying to raise transportation funding. It's, it's sorely needed, so, you know, any, any influence we can put on the state legislature for transportation funding and let them know that these are tough decisions that we're currently having to try and make, it would be helpful.
You have our mayor, Bill Lambert, has a couple of comments. Go ahead, Bill.
Well, yes, a couple of comments, and the things that Tyler is talking about on our roads and streets is exactly how he describes it, and it's one of the very important things. Hopefully, the legislatures will come through with some kind of transportation funding. Who knows how that will end up? Who knows how that will end up, because there's all kinds of different creative bills, and by the end of the day, nothing may happen. But this, what this does for all of us, and the citizens in refined town need to understand this, they, it would help for citizens to push, not the mayor or the city council, this is a legislative state thing as well as nationwide thing. We all know, we got over 400 bridges in this state that's shot, that needs to be repaired, and we're talking about billions of dollars of infrastructure needs. And this state, the country needs to do it, wake up, because the country's in the same position, but our state of Idaho needs to do more to get this infrastructure, work on the infrastructure and maintain it. And I think Tyler and his group's doing the best they can with what they've got to work with. And so the comment I want to make is that for all of the councilors, these are the very reality when I talk to citizens, what we're up against, what we're faced, because the money's just not there.
Well, my question, Tyler, is, we still have road condition in front of East City Park on Third Street. Sooner or later, it's gotta be rebuilt.
Yes.
I mean, it finally gets to the point where the road opens up and swallows up a car, or we actually end up blocking the road off. It's not usable any longer, which is not an acceptable choice. So I understand what you're saying, you know, we could not do that, and we can do a whole lot of other stuff. Or do we do that, and then that's a main thoroughfare, and then that's taken care of, and then next year, we can apply this? Or maybe we could do a little bit of that, and to me, Third Street is one that really needs to be taken care of. Go ahead.
The concern, Wayne, is that, and I completely understand and agree with what you're saying, and that's really why we're here, is to talk about these tough choices we have to make, because it's not just Third Street. D Street's gonna be on its heels, and F Street's gonna be after that, and every dime we spend chasing our tail on these rebuilds, we're gonna get further and further behind. And so it's, it's an attractive option to just say, "Okay, this is the one place that really is visible, and we need to take care of this," and we agree that especially on arterial streets, we've got to do something with them. But as we continue to make that choice, it's gonna really get to the point that we have to look at just closing streets or going back to gravel. We just, we won't have the option to continue to fund, because we'll have so many streets that are beyond useful life if we don't do these treatments, that we just won't have the option. Gary?
Just getting ready for the budget presentation here, but...
Nope, don't have time for that, so...
Actually, and you make a really good point, Wayne, that something like Third Street, we have to address. The council made the decision to proceed with the maintenance options. That can be deviated from. Certainly, that's not Tyler's recommendation. Bottom line is, we need to identify additional revenues. Now, we support the maintenance program with about $300,000 to $400,000 a year, as much as we can get, but we may have to identify weighing that priority against other priorities, and you get those every budget year. You get them in parks development, programming, all types of other operational stuff. So it'll just be a hard decision that we're gonna have to make.
Walter?
Tyler, when did you bring to the council the pavement management program?
That was in 2010.
Okay. And the council approved it, bought into the program?
That's correct.
But has never fully funded it, have we?
No, we've never reached the funding threshold for the treatment rotation that we'd like to be on.
The funding for that program as presented is about $600,000 a year?
Yeah, about 600 in maintenance. That doesn't include rebuild costs, so things like Third Street would be separate. That would be surface treatment maintenance.
But, and we're only funding about half of it?
Consistently, 300 to 400 a year, depending on the amount of money we can find, which is up between 100 and 200,000 over where we were four years ago. But we bought a program and didn't bring a checkbook.
Well, are you reading my mind? Is that what you're doing? Because it sounds like it, because as we go into this budget year, we need to start identifying where our priorities are. And we know, and I think Lewiston fell into this situation, where their streets deteriorated to the point where they don't even have the money to fix them. And I see us going that direction. I had those concerns last summer, and Third Street was one of them. And so, Mayor, Gary, as you move into this budget cycle, I think we need to take a look at, how are we going to fund our streets at a better level than what we are right now? One of the things that the citizens look at your city council for is safety, fire, police.
Loose dogs in potholes.
Boilots flush, water runs, and the streets don't knock the bottom out of their car. So...
I thought they were concerned about quality administration.
It's the quality of the administration that brings the workable budget to the council to approve.
Thank you for clarifying my role.
Thank you.
I think that all of the comments here, you know, most welcome, but we still haven't got any streets fixed. And I think your possible, at least short-term or midterm, solution to that problem is something you're gonna try, and as far as the citizens of the town not liking the chip seal, well, oh, every day I get up and there's something I don't like. And so I guess I'll get over the chip seal along with my neighbors. And I think if we can somehow figure out a way to put more into the maintenance budget, if nothing else, and if this program does proceed positively the way you think it might, you're pretty sold on this rubberized...
Sounds good.
Yeah, it shows a lot of promise. You know, the California DOT has mandated that 20 percent of its maintenance budget be spent on this product. They're requiring it because they've had such good success with it, and so they've, it's been used pretty widely. Kevin Lilly, Les McDonald, myself, went over to the Portland area last, this last year to meet with three different governmental agencies that have used the product. We toured some sites where they'd used it, and were able to see what they'd used on the type of pavements, and it shows a lot of promise for an area in the toolbox where we haven't had a tool up to this point.
See, Don Palmer, C finance manager, has come for. What do you have to say for it, Don? You got some money pigeonholed away that we don't know about?
We're running out of time, too, Don.
Yep, we are.
Just a real quick comment, and Mayor Lambert said it best, and that's more funding mechanisms that are needed for streets. Gas tax, that slide is excellent in this regard, because we have, for the last 10 to 15 years, have received about $890 to $910,000 over the last 10 years. It hasn't varied at all in the 10 years yet. Population's grown, paving costs have grown, yet the funding mechanism has stayed stable. It isn't a matter of just going through a budget process and trying to figure out priorities, it's a matter of trying to figure out a way to get more revenue. And Tyler, we've expressed that, Tyler. We came up with this through the budget process four years ago, and we were boosting more, as Gary mentioned earlier, towards that. Lambert's exactly right. The mayor's exactly right, and we need to push these legislators a little bit, so...
Okay, very good. Well, thank you. Great report, and moving forward to that.
Mr. Chairman, could we go to the sewer rate discussion? We're moving ahead with some issues there regarding the recreational vehicle park sewer rate.
Okay, I wanted to go to recycling and carts update, but...
I'm just concerned we're not gonna have time to get it...
Gary, I'm gonna get it all, sorry.
Gary, I asked that Neighborhood Greenways be on this agenda. We can move it two weeks. So that'll give you a little...
Fair enough.
If I may, yeah, this'll be very brief.
Okay, go for it.
We've had one of our customers in the sanitary sewer system outside city limits, both in the southeast Moscow sewer district, come to us, asking about the possibility of considering rates for RV parks for wastewater in our system. And our fee schedule right now does not address RV parks at all. It has, you know, single-family, multifamily, trailer courts, you know, apartments.
So we don't have any RV parks?
So we don't, yeah, we don't have any RV parks, so there's a reason for it. But there is one out in the system that we provide service to in the sewer district. And so we've been requested to look into the possibility of creating a rate class dealing with RV parks, so we'll start looking, and we've already started the research related to that, and what that may result in. The issue, of course, is that RV parks have a very seasonal and very fluctuating level of inhabitation as compared to a trailer park or an apartment complex.
Walter?
How is that RV park billed at this time?
They are billed based, I believe it's all on apartment rates.
About $27 a month, whatever that is.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's apartment rates.
And it's billed monthly? It's billed monthly?
Mm-hmm, that's correct.
Is that account up to date?
That account is not up to date, is my understanding.
Thank you.
And they are also looking at some expansion, which is part of what's raising the question as well.
Want anything?
No, I've just, this has been brought up to me probably by the same person you've talked to, and I think the discussion most certainly has merit for the reasons you mentioned.
Okay, thank you, Les. Tim Davis, recycling and carts update.
As you are all aware, we issued a RFP to Latos Sanitation back in December regarding the single-stream recycling roll cart program. We received that RFP response back. Staff has reviewed it. I've met with both Gary and Don, at which point I was directed to meet with LSI management staff, which I did late last week. We discussed the response that we did receive, and I gave some clarifications as well as received some clarifications on that response. At the end of that meeting, I asked LSI to bring forth a modified response, which I expect within the next couple of weeks.
Been amended?
Amended, yes.
Based upon y'all's discussions of what you were asking and what they were trying to provide?
Yes. Joe Johnson and Lori Nguyen, the general manager, are both out of town this week. Lori has assured me that she is going to get together with Joe the first part of next week. They want to move on this as well, so as soon as I receive that back, I will be bringing it forward.
If I may. Go ahead, Gary.
So a little bit of a hybrid situation, too. We do have a curb-side recycling program, which will be replaced by the roll cart, single-stream recycling program, if that comes through and council wishes to pursue it. So you have a couple, an existing program that's currently franchised, and a new program that's being promoted. So Tim's working through the intricacies of how that works with the contract with LSI. So that's one of the reasons that it's moving ahead in this fashion as well.
Both contracts, though, are with the same company?
Yes.
Yeah, the proposal is from the same company providing the current service.
Precisely. And that's the way our contract reads. We have an omnibus contract that covers everything from disposal to collection to recycling to composting. So it's all tied up in one system, which is what we negotiated 20 years ago.
Okay. Questions?
No, no, I...
It sounds like it's moving along.
Yes.
And perhaps in the near future, we can expect to actually be able to implement it then.
Yep, yep.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Yep.
We had one other report from Kevin Lilly on a Neighborhood Greenways pilot project, but I think we'll put that off for two weeks.
Or can you do it in five?
No, I'm gonna put it off for two weeks and give these guys a chance to get started at 4:30, so...
Okay.
Being nothing else to come before this committee, we are adjourned. Thank you.